Good evening, everyone, and welcome. The work session for the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, August 3rd, 2023, and the time is now 6:02 PM. Board of Trustees present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Hodges, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Newhouse, and Trustee McDaniel. I would like to ask everyone to please turn off or silence your cell phones or any electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask our Board Vice President and Board Equity Committee Lead, Winford Adams Jr., to lead us in reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. "Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students, with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do."
Thank you, Trustee Adams, and I'd like to state for the record that Trustee Correia has joined us at 6:03 PM. Our first order of business today is the review of the minutes from previous meetings. So does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes from June 1st Special Call Session, the June 8th Work Session, our June 13th Regular Board Meeting, and our June 27th Special Call Session? All right. These items will be submitted as part of our consent agenda on Tuesday, August 8th Regular Board Meeting. Our next item for this evening, it will be the swearing in of our new Chief of Police. So for the new Spring ISD Chief of Police, Matthew Rodriguez, at this time, I would ask Chief Rodriguez to approach the podium while I introduce a very special guest who would administer the oath of office. Judge Genesis Draper, a Texas native with a strong family tradition of community service, is a beacon of justice in Harris County. After earning her law degree from the University of Texas at Austin, she started as an Assistant Public Defender, eventually serving at the state and federal level in Houston. As an adjunct professor at the University of Houston Law Center, she also shares her experience with our future legal professionals. On the bench, Judge Draper is known for her work in bail reform and her ongoing efforts to improve the criminal justice system. Away from the court, she treasures her family life with her husband, attorney Brandon Leonard, and her two beautiful children, Asa and Phoenix. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a warm welcome for Judge Genesis Draper.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if you'll repeat after me. Raise your right hand. "I, Matthew Rodriguez..."
"I, Matthew Rodriguez..."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"...that I will faithfully execute..."
"I will faithfully execute..."
"...the duties of the Office of Police Chief..."
"The duties of Office of Police Chief."
"...for the Spring Independent School District of the State of Texas..."
"For the Spring Independent School District of the State of Texas."
"...and will, to the best of my ability..."
"And will, to the best of my ability."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States."
"...and of this state."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Draper.
Thank you very much.
You have some remarks for us?
Yes, ma'am, I do, very quickly. First off, I'd really like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I would especially like to thank my wife, Kelly, for being here, and three of the five kids that could be here tonight are here supporting me, and I really appreciate them, and this is why I come to work every day. Thank you very much. I'd also like to send a special thank you to Dr. Lupita Henhosseh for making this appointment, trusting me with this honor. It's really big, and I take it very seriously. I would be very remiss if I didn't mention, thank you to the support of the Board of Trustees. This was no easy decision to make and support Dr. Henhosseh for making, but you trusted in her, and you trusted in me, and I'm not going to let you down. I'd like to say to the people that are present, our team members here at Spring ISD, I don't know all of you, I don't know most of you. However, without doubt and without fail, I will put myself in the way of danger for every one of you. Every single person in here wearing this badge this past year, I'm very confident, will do the same. God forbid we ever get presented with such an instance that we have to respond in such a way. You have the team in place to protect you and to protect our kids, I promise you, I promise you. Thank you very much for this honor.
Chief, I also know that we have some promotions for our officers. Will you please introduce?
I would love to, thank you very much. First off tonight, I'll be promoting to the rank of Detective Officer Devin Barrios. Officer Barrios has been serving with us, he's worked multiple campuses, including Spring High School, and he's going to be helping us in our Criminal Investigation Division, helping us solve crimes and prevent them from happening again with Russell, that's kind of a lot. Thank you, sir, congratulations. Secondly, to the rank of Corporal, promoting Officer Fabian Walker. Officer Walker is a tenured officer with our agency. There's not many people in this district that he doesn't know and hasn't worked with. He's got a very special interest in helping out our young men within the district, helping keep them on the right path, and I'm very proud to put this badge on him. Thank you, sir. All right, now, to the rank of Sergeant, Detective Jared Morton. Jared has served with us for several years, he's worked in all capacities within this police department, including most recently, our Criminal Investigative Division. I was taught long ago that being a leader is to give yourself to the people who you're charged with leading, give little bits and pieces of you to them. So tonight, Jared's being presented with a Sergeant's badge. This was my Sergeant's badge, and I charge him to keep it, keep it shiny, and wear it right, and be the best you can be. Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate this opportunity, and I have full faith in these men.
Thank you, and we're so excited to have you as our Chief of Police. I'm really excited that most of your career has been spent in the Spring community. You know Spring, you know who we are, and we're really grateful to have you lead us as our Chief of Police, and congratulations to the three of you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We want to take some photos.
Sure.
I'm going to ask the... If with all the objections to the board, we can step down to the horseshoe to take some photos with you guys, and then Dr. Henhosseh has some announcements she'd like to make as well. Judge Draper, can you join us for the photos?
Officer, Officer. Sure, sure, let's move. Absolutely.
They're going to injure the judge. One with the... Where do you want the judge, in the middle? Congratulations, yes, ma'am.
So, that was exciting. Let's do one more round of applause. I do know we have many of our officers that are here and lieutenants, and just thank you for all of your support during our transition and in preparing for the start of school. So thank you so much. And so, more excitement. This year has been an amazing year for us here in Spring ISD, one that we celebrate because we're so excited, but at the same time, we are a little sad because we did have principals that were promoted and have moved on to bigger and better things. That also has given us the opportunity to promote some amazing people here in Spring ISD, educators that have been committed to Spring ISD. So tonight, we're bringing forth and announcing ten new principals. Eight are promoted from within and are not new, but have taken this big step in accepting the challenge to lead the campuses. And we welcome two from out of our district. So I'd like to start first and foremost with BAML Elementary. I'd like to invite Ms. Lakeisha Donovan. She's been named as the new principal.
Come on up, you can clap, come on.
She started in the district back in 2016 as a 21st Century Site Coordinator. She's worked her way through here in Spring ISD. She's also our former Clark, served as a former Clark Intermediate School as a math coach, and former Clark Primary School as the Assistant Principal, and she has helped increase student achievement, increase parental involvement, and of course, community engagement. I'd like to introduce Ms. Donovan, our principal at BAML Elementary. And next up is Benneke Elementary, and we have Ms. Julie Smith, another new principal who is a longtime Spring ISD veteran. Ms. Smith served as Benneke's Assistant Principal this past year. Prior to that, she worked at Icon Road Elementary School for more than ten years and served as the school's Assistant Principal starting in 2019. As the Assistant Principal at Benneke, Ms. Smith helped establish a culture of universal achievement and accountability, resulting in effective instruction and positive student outcomes. At Icon Road, when she was back at Icon Road, she assisted in the turnaround of that school from an F-rated campus to a B-rating in 2022, and a campus where 96% of those students are economically disadvantaged. I'm excited to welcome and congratulate Ms. Julie Smith as our principal at Benneke Elementary. Next up at Burchett Elementary, our new principal there is Nacarol Dixon Hall, who has spent her entire career, more than a decade, with Spring ISD, most recently serving as the Assistant Principal at Hirsch Elementary. At Hirsch, she spearheaded new curriculum development and a redesign of special education services that resulted in a 10% gain in academic growth. She was also previously Assistant Principal at Cooper Elementary, as well as a literacy coach at Thompson Elementary, and a teacher both at Clark and Benneke Schools. Next, we have Clark Elementary. We have one of our new two Spring Campus Leaders for this year. It's Ms. Mashonda Walker Shaq. Ms. Shaq comes to us from Houston ISD, where she most recently served as the Dean of Instruction, assisting in monitoring the overall administration of instructional programs and campus-level operations for grades six through eight. With 15 years of experience, Ms. Shaq has also served as an Associate Principal, Teacher Specialist, Accelerated Reading Instruction Specialist, and a Math Instructional Coach. We welcome Ms. Shaq as our principal at Clark Elementary. And then, over at Heritage Elementary, we are pleased to welcome our new principal, Dr. Cesar Alvarez. Dr. Alvarez has more than two decades of experience in public education, most recently serving as an Assistant Principal at Westfield High School. Prior to that, he served as a principal in Kansas City, where he successfully led efforts to boost attendance and an average increase in student achievement of 15% across all subject areas. His doctorate in Educational Leadership is right down the road from the University of Houston. Go Cougs! And now, we are turning to Northgate Crossing Elementary School. I am pleased to introduce Ms. Matangeli Harris, who has been named the school's new principal. Ms. Harris has worked in education for over 17 years, most recently over in Spring Branch ISD as a ninth and 10th grade level principal. Before stepping into education, she began her career serving in the US Army for almost a decade. She later became a teacher, testing coordinator, Assistant Principal in El Paso ISD, before going on to serve as an elementary principal at Rola Public Schools in Rola, Missouri, where she led her campus from an F to a B rating in two years, before eventually returning to Texas to serve as an Assistant Principal in Brazos Port ISD and Bay City ISD. So we welcome Ms. Harris. Our next new principal is a longtime Spring ISD educator who was promoted to the top spot on his campus over the summer. Reynolds Elementary School's brand-new principal is Mr. Timothy Livingston. Mr. Livingston has served as an Assistant Principal at Reynolds since 2019, and he also recently served as one of the summer school principals at Heritage Elementary. He has spent the majority of his education career in Spring ISD, also serving as an Assistant Principal at Sires Elementary, a district development specialist for mathematics, and a third-grade teacher and instructional specialist at Hirsch Elementary. We welcome and congratulate Mr. Livingston. Finally, in our lineup for new elementary principals, we have Mr. Richard Hoard, our new principal at the International School at Sires for this year. Mr. Hoard is a familiar face in Spring, having been at Decane High School since 2016. He has worked as an educator for nearly a decade now, serving as a middle and high school math teacher before coming to Decane. Mr. Hoard has served in several roles at the campus, including math instructional specialist, summer school coordinator, summer school principal, and in his most recent role as Decane's Assistant and Associate Principal, he led efforts in curriculum and instruction, campus behavior and attendance, and has served as a graduation liaison. We welcome and congratulate Mr. Hoard. And now, we want to turn to Bailey Middle School. We have a new principal, Dr. Veranda M. Holtz. Dr. M. Holtz has been in Spring ISD since 2019, most recently serving as an Associate Principal of Curriculum and Instruction at Spring High School, where she oversaw the new teacher mentor program, college career and military readiness programs, and state testing for the campus. Previously, as a middle school Assistant Principal in Humboldt ISD, she utilized data analysis to strengthen instruction and student achievement. Dr. M. Holtz has also taught at the post-secondary level as an adjunct professor at Lone Star College and as a science teacher utilizing her degree in biology. We congratulate and welcome Dr. M. Holtz. Last but not least, we turn to the School for International Studies at BAML, where our very own Dr. Trent Russell has been named the new principal for the 23-24 school year. Dr. Russell has been with Spring ISD for nearly a decade, having served as an Assistant Principal at Dewitt Middle School, and most recently, as the principal at Heritage Elementary. During her time at Heritage, the campus was also awarded a B-rating from the TEA and earned distinctions in comparative growth as well as academic achievement in science. An educator for almost two decades, she earned her Doctorate of Educational Leadership from Nova Southeastern University this past year. So we congratulate, and she's home already, Dr. Russell. And so, we're very excited to have all of these excellent, experienced educators, leaders stepping into their new roles at these campuses, and we look forward to having all of them as part of our principal leadership team for the 23-24 school year. There's too many twenties in there, so congratulations to all of you, congratulations.
Hello, before we get ready to take our photos, I just wanted to comment and congratulate all of you all on behalf of the board and to say, our principals, you're the backbone of what we do here. And we're excited that so many of you are homegrown, and we're excited about the innovation that our two new principals are going to bring. So congratulations and thank you. Before you leave, hold on. I was going to ask our new principals if they had any family members here tonight that they wanted to recognize. So who wants to go first?
Mr. Livingston, come to the mic so we can, everybody can...
We should have done our chief.
First of all, thank you so much. I like to recognize my family, beginning with...
I like to recognize my family, beginning with my wife. This year, we will have been married twenty-three years, and she is most certainly the backbone of everything I do. So my wife, Treasure Livingston, and also my four of my five children, my beautiful daughters, my oldest daughter, Aleah Livingston. Next to her is Aniri Livingston, Anyla Livingston, and my youngest baby, Ayla Livingston. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Who's next?
All right. With me tonight is my beautiful wife, Maria, and also three, my only three, children. Brad, he's my oldest. He's right there. He's actually gonna be senior this year. And then Sydney, she's a sophomore. And then I got my little guy right there. He's a big third grader this year. His name's Jude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. I have with me today my husband, Aaron Hall, my daughter, Harley Hall, who cannot be here for more than five minutes, my nephew, Maddox Tillman, who's a Spring ISD student, my sister, Joya, and my brother, John, and a lot of people streaming online.
All right.
Okay, I brought the tribe with me this evening. First, I want to recognize my husband, Patrick. We've been married twenty-six years. That's actually my high school sweetheart. We have four beautiful children, Sydney, Leila, Jamari, and one who is not here, Patrick Jr. He's working. They're all products of Spring ISD.
All right.
I also have with me my sister, Demetria, my niece, Brooklyn, her husband, Kelvin, my brother-in-law. I have both set to my parents. I have my in-laws and my biological parents, my mother and my father, Mr. and Mrs. Linsen. I have my in-laws here, Mr. and Mrs. Donovan. And I have my brother-in-law back there in the back, Mr. Cedric Donovan.
Wonderful. It takes a village, right? Welcome.
Board team, I don't actually have biological family here because I'm from Mobile, and I only have my husband here. He's at work. But I do have my new work family, my great assistant principal, and then I see one of my great, my SSs, Mr. Gary here. So I want to say thank you all for coming and supporting me tonight. It's been a great day for us, my first day as principal. So thank you all for showing up and supporting me today.
Board President, Board Members, Lieutenant, thank you. Primero quiero decir gracias a Maribel, que es mi esposa. She went with me to Kansas City, Kansas, four years ago. When we were leaving from Houston to go to Kansas, we were literally in Spring, Texas, when she said, when are we coming back? And so it just happens, we moved back home and working in Spring. So I just want to say, we have six grandkids, and there was no way I could bring them. So, so thank you, Board. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to recognize my husband, Casey Smith. He has been a huge support for all the years that I've served in Spring and is my biggest fan, and our children and grandchildren are with family tonight.
All right. All right, is that everyone? Okay.
Is Ms. Harris still back there? Did she leave? She left? Okay. I think we got everyone.
Okay. Well, that was exciting. Thank you, Dr. Hannah Holtsen. Our next item on the agenda is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on any agenda topics before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up or registered tonight for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of innovation, Dr. Matthew Ferris.
Thank you, President Dorian. Good evening, members of the board, senior leadership, our super proud superintendent, and all those in the audience today with us. This next item can be found in your packets on page sixty. If you recall, I know it's been a little while, but back in April, I shared with you our STAR redesign. The redesign, the fourteen new question types that TEA has updated the STAR test. And if you recall, we were challenged a little bit by answering some of those questions as well, with the multiple selection and dropdown menus and hotspots on the pictures. Then in May, we shared the updates, not only on the STAR redesign, but also the accountability system and that massive overhaul that was underway by TEA. What we want to share today is a presentation that was developed by the Texas Education Agency and the Commissioner, Mike Morath, where we will see the potential impact that these changes will have. The state released some what-if data, which provided also additional insights into changes, such as scaling changes that were not announced in the prior updates, that also will potentially impact us. And really, the view of the community and the state. And that's what districts are finding across the state. If you looked at the news or even social media, just the outcry and disappointment. So much of this has been political due to the legislative session. You know, all the work we've done, despite the twenty-seven A and B campuses that we had last year, you know, we're coming into a whole new system that has different scales, different weights, different ways of measuring, and it's truly not a comparison one to the other. You know, and I think we shared last time about just about CCMR. You know, the goal was, the state goal was that sixty percent of students would be college and career-ready by 2030. And now the rule's changing. We were at seventy percent last year by the original rules. We not only beat the state's goal by 2030, you know, we had CCMRs and hey, we were rocking it out. So we're gonna go ahead and get started with the presentation. It does open with about a five-minute video from the commissioner speaking to you directly. And this presentation was designed for school boards. And we did come in and make some adjustments, and I'll explain those. But we did our best to make sure that we did not change any of the wording for their slides, and so there'll be pop-ups that come in so you can see kind of the feedback that we didn't want to share outside of the politics of the wording. And I will switch it over for the video.
Hello, school board members. My name is Mike Morath. I'm Commissioner of Education for the state of Texas, and I am a former school board member. I served on the Dallas Board for four and a half years. And school board service is critical. When you think about the role that you play in our republic, you are where the buck stops, the governing body of the local school district. And you are responsible for how well those schools work and how well we serve collectively all five and a half million souls in Texas public schools across the state of Texas. Thank you for your work. It is hard, daunting, and the pay is pretty terrible for a school board member. So thank you for your work. One of the things that I reflect on as a former school board member, one of the responsibilities that I held, was I needed to know how well our schools were doing in Dallas. Were they the same? Were they getting better? Were they getting worse? Because it was my job to oversee our administrative team and make sure that we were making progress for kids. And so what the agency does, what TEA does, to try to help improve your ability to govern your school district is we provide A through F ratings, which then gives a summative evaluation of all of your schools. And so every year when A through F ratings come out, you can take a look at the ratings. You can then compare them to last year, and you can say, are my schools getting better? Are they about the same? Are they getting a little worse? And you can then help build action plans with your administrative team accordingly to support our kids. What has been true for A through F for the last five years, really since 2017, is it's been basically the same system. The cut points have been basically the same. The mechanics have been basically the same. We evaluate schools holistically on the better of student proficiency or student growth. As you all well know, evaluating schools is complex. Our little humans are very, very complex creatures. And so trying to get a single picture of performance is difficult. But A through F does that very holistically. And the fact that it has remained unchanged since 2017 is also super helpful because you can then look at this year's results. Your teachers can look at this year's results. Your parents can look at this year's results and see, you know, is the school getting better? What kind of progress are we making for kids? It was not always like that in Texas with the school rating system. Before the A through F system, the agency, the way TEA worked, would tweak the ratings every single year. They basically raised cut scores ever so slightly every, any given year. And that was good in terms of setting goals that are constantly higher and helping us push forward for kids. But it made life really confusing as a school board member in Dallas in my old life because I would have a hard time figuring out, you know, our last year's results the same or better than this year's results. But the downside of what we've done over the last five years is we do want to constantly get better for kids. We want to make sure that we are setting higher and higher goals. In fact, the statute that sets up A through F requires us to continuously increase cut scores to ensure that Texas is a national leader in preparing kids for post-secondary success. So this year, we are refreshing the A through F rating system. We will be using the information that we've gleaned over the last five years, all the feedback that we get from educators, from parents and others, to update the way the ratings work. And what that also means is that the ratings that you look at this year cannot be easily compared with last year's ratings. There's a few places where cut scores are actually changing, in some cases going up, and so it will no longer lead to an apples-to-apples comparison. So to try to make life easier for you, what we are doing is we're publishing preliminary what-if ratings using last year's data, but using the new rating system calculations. And so that way, when ratings come out this fall, you will be able to look at, compare this year's actual ratings with last year's sort of hypothetical what-if calculation ratings. And that way, you can have a good apples-to-apples comparison on performance. We're gonna also put those hypothetical what-if ratings up on TexasSchools.gov so that when parents or teachers or anybody in the community looks to evaluate year-over-year performance, they can compare this year's performance with last year's performance using this year's metrics. And so we hope that this helps make the job that you have as a school board easier. But it's also gonna be important for all of us to kind of communicate about this, to make sure everybody's on the same page. So we'll be communicating more about this in the fall when ratings come out. We have provided your superintendent with hypothetical, what are preliminary what-if ratings so they can go over those with you. And there's a lot more details. If you want to get into the mechanics of it, we have all that information on our website, provided that information to your superintendent. But I wanted to just talk to you directly about these changes because I knew that this would be important for me as a former school board member and hope that this is valuable for you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for the service that you do for our kids. School boards are critical to the foundation of our democracy and to highly functioning school systems. God bless you for what you do.
All right, so now we're going to progress through the deck to look at the components of the new A through F system as well as the reason why, or the justification, I should say, for these changes. According, as the commissioner stated, according to state law, the purpose of the accountability system is to do three primary things. One is to improve student performance. Two, to eliminate the achievement gaps. And three, to prepare students for post-secondary success. Really, these are the three things that all of us work every day to achieve. And the accountability system is intended to help show our progress towards that and foster a culture of growth. Now, as a district, and we spoke about this back in May, that we do have additional information to help inform us regarding performance. This is a slide that was a blank slide that TEA had a placeholder for us to put in, you know, some of those components that we've discussed of what else besides accountability, A through F accountability, do we value? And so throughout the deck, you're gonna see little green spring boxes like this. These are the pieces that we have added to the presentation. And this was actually one of our placeholders. So just want to bring us back to that the A through F accountability rating heavily relies on STAR. Over seventy percent of the calculations are focused just on STAR, which is one test for one day, one moment in a kid's educational career for that year. And we're gauging a whole year's worth of work on that one day, primarily through the A through F model. We know that in Spring, we're focused on holistic learning, making sure that students are prepared for every day they come into our schools. When they're at home, that we're developing character and community and pride. And also, as they leave us, that they're prepared for life after. And we see that with best, you know, best in the state and even in the nation in our fine arts programs, our athletics programs, the job training that we provide, these extracurricular activities that can't be gauged in an A through F rating system. You think of all the things that our family and community engagement does to support families. And many times, these supports go even beyond the direct application to reading or math or the core, but they have lifelong impacts. And so all of these components, health, safety, dual language, we do so much every day. And so as we're looking at these changes, I think that it's important for us to remember and keep grounded in that while we are working to increase academic ratings through A through F, through STAR achievement, which is one of our norm reference materials, but we're also working towards the whole child. The state, as mentioned in the video, has gained feedback. This deck, they put in there all the way back to 2019. And that's really to say that as ratings have been released, that we have been very vocal in how we feel that those ratings are calculated or deficits. And so the ratings throughout from 2019 through 2023 have been incorporated some of the feedback from educators as well as families in these changes. So primarily, though, the majority of the rounds of actual A through F feedback have occurred over the last year with June, November, January, and March. And that's really where we first found that this was coming this year. There had been talk about potential updates, but you know, even there, what we hear, oh, 2017, it seems like a long time ago. The first year, there was the flood, so we actually didn't even get any ratings that year with three years of a pandemic. And so when you're looking and talking about updating a system that really hasn't had a lot of time to even begin to make a difference or be impacting instruction. But nonetheless, the changes are coming. This is the A through F refresh year, as you see in the orange there. And there's been different work to capture new baselines that they're gonna be using from the data. That's, you know, there's also was the delay in STAR release this year for three through eight as they rescaled that assessment because it is an entirely new test. I did want to point out something on the slide again, as I mentioned earlier. There is a lot of political wording in here, talking about, you know, we must make these changes. I presented this slide back in May. You can see the actual Texas Education Code. It just says periodically reviewed to make sure we're leaders in the nation. It doesn't have a timeframe. It doesn't say when that needs to occur. But hearing the message, that's what you're gonna hear, is that, oh, this is a mandatory change despite these other factors. So there is no statutory requirement, no timeframe. Another thing that districts have asked for across the state is a hold harmless. We've also been adamantly told there will be no hold harmless. In prior years, when accountability systems have changed or had major revisions, we have received hold harms. Even when assessments have changed, we've had hold harmless years. We have an assessment change. We have accountability system change, and yet no hold harmless. I think that just goes back to what we talked about, about the politics. I think that just goes back to what we talked about, about the politics and the motivation behind these changes. So what is what-if? What is happening is these what-if ratings are taking what we, what we received last year, so our 2022 ratings with our 27 A and B schools, and they are recalculating them utilizing the new methodologies. So we did receive the what-if calculations, and so we're going to share a little bit of those today with you. One thing that is very important to point out, and the commissioner mentioned that, is that 2022 ratings and 2023 ratings cannot be cared, cannot be compared side by side. I think the most heartbreaking of all these changes is this, because even though you may readjust and realign, we should not penalize campuses that do good work, that, that have students who learn and teachers who poured everything in to grow. And even despite the growth that they received, they still potentially can have a lower rating. So that was, this is a verbiage right from the commissioner, and he has said it time and time again, that it is possible a campus with an A rating in 2022 may improve in 2023, but yet their old rating will go down. And we, in our own what-if, saw, saw those same type of examples for last year. And then even for this year, all the work that our teachers put in and the work our students did to grow and close those gaps from COVID, it's not going to be a comparison when you look at the new system. There's a number of words on this slide, but what you're going to see throughout it is the words preliminary, 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 on everything from the header all the way down. So we really don't know what the final rules are going to be. There was a period for some, some additional input. There's also scaled scores and backend data that was not shared. We've actually reached out to TEA requesting some of those, and they have shared that it's, it's not available at this time. So we, you know, there's a number of things, even our own work in trying to create some predictions like we normally do in a year on accountability were not possible this year. So these are preliminary when, when you look at the what-ifs. And basically, I think what, what is being said is just to expect that there may be some changes one way or the other. However, there are going to be final versions of the what-if calculations published on the state website. And so they will be available to everyone to be able to look at. It's set for September. And so they are designed to educate, as the verbiage was there, our stakeholders. So even the, this is the actual accountability portal. This is what you would normally see, like in the upper left hand, that's the login. You type in the school name or the district name, and then it'll pull up the ratings. So this is what it typically looks like. What you'll notice now is there is this gray box kind of in the middle, right above the green. This gray box is kind of setting a separate saying, these were the old ways of measuring, and everything above here is the new way. So for this specific district, there wasn't a change. They chose this slide, but the, you know, it shows in A, oh, they just dropped three points. That's all they dropped. However, this is not a typical situation. This is not what most districts or most campuses are going to find. And so as we look at the preliminary what-ifs, let's take a look at a highly performing elementary school here in spring. We did not put the name of the school. We did mask that, but we do want you to know that the school has been, they're hard fighters. They have performed well. They go out, they have, you know, gaps, what we, we see at beginning of year every year, and they close those gaps and they make a difference for kids. And year after year, they've been one of our higher performing schools. So let's take a look at the what-if calculations. So at the top, and I know it's been a while since we reviewed them, you'll see domain one, student achievement. The changes to methodology verbiage is actually the verbiage from TEA. If you look, it says, there was no change for elementary and middle schools in domain one. Domain one was STAR testing. Okay? So when we look at that, the entire STAR test changed. Even the scaling is not complete. And so when, you know, we, we look at the accountability for next year, that we, even though the, the message may be, oh, there was no changes in domain one, the truth is, it's a whole different test. It's a whole different scale, and it's a whole new level of rigor. And so that is an important component as we're reading between the lines. The next thing, as we go down, you'll see it's the best of domain two. If you recall, domain two had two parts. Domain two A, which is academic growth. Academic growth focuses on looking at how students performed because not all students, you know, oftentimes, especially in school districts that, you know, may have a population that has highly mobile, you may have students who have missed out. They've missed out on receiving their primary instruction. So they may not be at MEAT's, MEAT's level, right? The STAR, the accountability system only calculates based on MEATs. And so they may not be at level, but we may have grown them. We may have grown them 1.25. We had so many kids last year that we grew over one and a quarter years and a year. And so that's where that academic growth has come in. For our demographics and for our student population, we do have a highly mobile student body and families. And so we, that has been an area we have year after year scored very well. We, we are experts at providing intervention, at tutorials, at meeting student needs, at closing gaps. And so that has been one of our high-scoring areas. And so when you look here and you see on that second line, it says updated methodology to capture growth for more students and includes learning acceleration, you think, oh, wow, that's great, right? We're getting to get more points for students and there's a whole quarter point bonus now that we get for accelerating learning. Well, with that factor, why did our scores drop by 13 points? Even though it's the same data, right? We're looking at 2022 data, but using 2023 methodology, and yet our scores dropped by 13 points. The reason it's not said on the, in that verbiage is the scale scoring has changed in the back. And so even though we may be capturing more students, we may be capturing bonus points, it's not a realistic growth. And they're not, we're not gaining more ability in that. The scale is actually changing the name of the game, similar to what we saw and we discussed with CCMR last year. It still is the best of either domain two A or two B. Two B is focused on relative performance. That is stating, looking at comparison groups. So for districts that have high economically disadvantaged students, it compares you to other schools that are, have a high economically disadvantaged that are similar to see, did you, did your growth outperform those other schools? And so that area actually did not have any change, and so you can see that it's exactly the same. Then you take the best of either domain one or two, which for us often is domain two because of that growth. And then we bring in, that's 70%. Then we bring in 30%, which is domain three, which is closing the gaps. So the verbiage there says includes more students with a minimum size of 10. So before, the minimum size was 25, which if you are in a school district, that impacts you more. It's 25 students that are testing. And so when you have 20, 25 students in a group, closing the gaps looks at demographic groups. So whether that be ethnicity or other support needs like economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, it looks at those factors. And so it, you had to have 25 students to be calculated in that number. Now it's down to 10. So it opened up more accountability for those, those smaller school districts or smaller schools. For us, we pretty much capture almost every group in every grade level. Another change this year, which is huge, is that it moves from a yes/no to a zero-four methodology. What that means is that as you look on that little pop-up slide, you see the difference, the different groups. So for each of those groups, there were 14 before, and we were down to six now, but those 14 groups each had a percentage that you needed to meet. So, you know, of, of one of the groups, so let's say it was emergent bilingual, you may needed 35%. If you got 35%, then you met the goal for the state as part of that federal growth requirement across the state. So before, it was just yes or no. Did you meet it or didn't you meet it? Now it's zero to four. So you, there's partial points of where you go in. So it's not just a yes or a no. And so now tabulations have also changed. Instead of getting credit, looking at, did you meet it for each of those, those demographic groups, it is now looking at for ethnicity and race. It's looking at your lowest two performing from the prior year. Also, you see the difference where before economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, special ed, were all separate and highly mobile, now they're all in a supergroup called a high focus. And so that just counts, counts one time as a goal. You still have special ed and continuously enrolled is the same. So as we look at overall, you can see that this high-performing school went from an 82B to a 71C. This is last year's data with this year's rules. So regardless of anything that, you know, that's no changes to, from instruction, it's the same instruction, the same achievement that happened last year, and those students or that campus would now had a C rating at a 71. Another thing that we did want to point out today is that, that you'll see in the verbiage TA provided, that the highest overall school score that a campus could receive, if they received three or four domains, below 70 is a 69. And the reason that is, is it goes back to that three Ds or Fs rule. It used to just be Fs, where if three of those four domains had an F, you could not, you could not receive a grade higher than the 59 or an F. Now that is also true for a D rating, that if you have three over the four, you can't have a higher than a D. So those best ofs kind of, kind of changed there. So let's look at another school. This is one of a schools, a school we are very proud of. It's a turnaround elementary. Previously had been a campus that we had worked with a lot with a failing rating and had made huge growth. So here you can see that same, same methodologies, but here you see that drop. Look at domain two A, academic growth. This is a campus whose students have some of the highest mobility in our district. And so there's a lot of growth needed to close those gaps. They're, they're, you know, going from a, a reading level, several grade levels below and closing that in a single year is just not a realistic, from a data perspective. There's, there's only so much substantial growth, even at 1.25 years, that actually beats, beats the, the norm. It is extremely challenging. But this specific campus was last year an 81. They were a B because of all of the growth that achieved, that they had achieved. Under this methodology, they'd be a 59, which is an F.
So can I ask at this time, I know we've all had this data in our binder for a while, so we've had an opportunity to look at it. We've walked through what-if from our initial, for the first campus. Is there any specific comparisons you wanted to make that was different from the first one and the second one? So I'm asking Mr. Dr. Parasol.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any differences? I think that, that between the two, I think that it, what it shows is that it's going to hit schools regardless. If you're a highly achieving school or you're, you know, historically performing school, I should say, I'm sorry, and, or a school that is a turnaround school and you're really closing those gaps, it is going to heavily impact you. Even more so, I think what's most disheartening is that this entire system really cuts at the heart of those schools that are turning around schools. When you look at, at, at districts that are not in high-income areas, those are the ones you see that are probably going to have the largest hit. The, the metro area, the urban schools, those are, those are going to be where you see some of the greatest declines in ratings. And a big part of that is because of that mobility, because of the opportunities that may not exist. You know, we, when you look at access for students, like even having a place to study, you know, how many, you know, that, that for many people is, is a, an opportunity that, that's not available. And so that has an impact in achievement and in, in, in the scores. So I think it, what it doesn't take into account is the work of turning around schools, and I think that it's heavily politically motivated.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a comment. So it, it's the, the conversation around the politics of the rating. Our focus on that feels like sort of focusing on the adults and not the students. Ultimately, what we are trying to do is produce scholars that can go out into a competitive global market and compete. And so the fact that these kids went to a B school, that's great. We can celebrate that. But that 59 says to me that when they got to college, they weren't going to be prepared. They weren't going to pass, is it the TSI that the kids take?
Yes, the TSI is a Texas College Readiness Assessment.
Right. So I, I'm hearing complaints from the colleges that the kids are arriving, they were B students in our schools, and they arrived and they couldn't read and write and do math at a college level. So I don't really care that much about the rating. Again, that's something I want to celebrate for all the hard work we do, but ultimately what this is about is not the adults in this system feeling good about themselves. It's about educating children and making sure they're ready. So I would rather be spending this time talking about what we're going to do to meet the higher standard. The standard is a standard, and I can't do anything to make Mike Morath change that. So I don't really want to spend all this time talking about how the different schools in all the what-ifs. I want to see the plans for how we're going to get and deal with our high mobility problem because you're right, that is a challenge for us. But I don't want to whine about our challenges. I want to start seeing some plans for how we're going to address them.
And I think that that's, that's the work that we do. That's, and, and that is the point that we're intending to make today, is that our strategic plan is the right plan. It's a student-centered plan. The resources that we do, the equity, the equitable distribution, the work we are doing to, to grow staff and students is making a difference. When we look at the accomplishments of our students, it's amazing the things they achieve, the places they go. And so regardless of the academic rating, we are making that, that impact. And that is continues, that continues to be the work that we do, is looking at how do we continue to give students every opportunity? And that's the focus of our principal meeting tomorrow. And the vast majority of that time will be reviewing data to say, how do we start from the first day of instruction to have a strong start for our kids?
Absolutely. So like, I already did my crying over what they did about the, I did that already. I'm, I'm done with that. So that was just my two cents on that.
I do want to kind of, I don't disagree at all with what you're saying because I don't want to spend the whole time talking about, you know, things that we can't change. But I still think there is some value in having this conversation in public so that the parents are aware and ready for what's coming, and the students and teachers, because we know it, but to hear it out in the public sphere in, in a meeting like this, I think there is some value to that, so.
I just wanted to ask a question about page 92, which compares how right now we project R ratings of campuses changing and also of the state. And it looks like there's a lot of schools that are going to decrease and very few that are going to increase.
That is correct. And I haven't got to that slide yet, but I, we, we also did our own comparison from what the state message was to what we found locally, and so that is part of it. As we go through this deck, I know it's hard because we have talked about it. This deck was prepared by the, the commissioner with, with the charge to superintendents that this be delivered in an open board session. He is statute, by statute, he's required to share the changes, and so he's utilizing superintendents to be the messengers of those changes.
I guess what astounds me is his, just, he's taking it for granted. He's assuming that if you make it harder to get a good grade, I mean, they're giving us grades and now it's going to be much harder to get a grade and that we're just going to be better, better in education in Texas. And we're pathetic. As I understand it, we're down like 37th or 40th in the nation, if I got that right. And so in what universe does he come up with this assumption that raising these ratings is going to help education in Texas? He hasn't done any kind of a analysis. I guess he's just, as a data person, he just, that's his world, and he's not looking at the system and what would raise it, like funding schools appropriately. So anyway, I, when we're talking about how are we going to do well? I think we've got a TEA that has I think we've got a TEA that has the complete wrong mindset for this. These people don't understand what a, a system is, I guess. So anyway, I'll leave it.
So.
And, and Dr. Parasol, if you'll walk us through and, and as he said, we'll go through the deck. It is one of the requirements that we go through the deck. And ultimately, I think, you know, all three of you are correct. We want to go through the deck and we want to inform our community. What Dr. Parasol has shown is that the scores we celebrated last year under the new system will now show that the schools are failing and that the district is failing. And so we want to make sure that when the parents see this, you know, one day I am sitting, my child is going to a B campus and we are celebrating that. And we've got, you know, great improvement in our reading scores. And what we do really well in spring, what our teachers and our principals do really well in spring is closing those gaps. And in the previous system, we were awarded and recognized for growing students. In this system, in this new proposed system or what we really don't understand clearly, but what it is doing is no longer recognizing that growth. And so we don't want our parents to wake up one day, open the newspaper. We've been celebrating that their child, and that's what's happening in one of the, in that example, is their child was in a B rated school where teachers were working really hard to get them reading and doing math and showing progress. And now it's going to be an F campus. And yet all that work and all that growth that that child made, those points are no longer there. And so we know, and I think Dr. Jensen, you stated it eloquently the last time. And Dr. Parasol talked about it. We are more than just a letter grade. Mr. Adams, you're absolutely correct. We don't want to spend time just reviewing something that we have at this point no control. But we do want to educate our parents, inform them of what is about to happen, but to reassure them that our focus has not changed. That's who we do and what we do is closing those gaps, getting our children up to grade level and pushing them forward, not just looking at this one letter grade, one score for that one day of the one hundred and eighty days that the child came to school. But our focus hasn't changed. Our goal has not changed. The, the, the work is going to get even harder for us and we're up for the challenge. And I know our teachers and our principals are too.
And I appreciate that. And I know we have requirements. You have gone through this with the, with the board. I just want to make sure that we're making the best use of our time and not being here too late at night. And so if we can get through what we need to get through here with the highlights that are important, I'm more interested in the communication plan because the parents are not going to see this. This is just repeating it to the people that we've already heard. And we've been through multiple training sessions and conferences and conventions where we've seen this. So let's meet our requirement here. And then I'd like to talk about a communication plan on how we are going to deliver that message to our, our parents in the community.
So we're going, I'll work on picking up the pace a little bit with the next school. We'd like to look at as a comprehensive high school. And so as you see here, again, same as before, the score on the left from last year, the, the new methodology. I do want to point out that CCMR is heavy in weighing for both district ratings as well as for high schools. That college career military impacts all three of the domains. And so with those changes, and here's a little picture from that slide where we saw the hundreds of percentage of increases in the requirement for the threshold for each letter grade. And so that will make an impact as well as the change for industry based certifications to now being a model in which not all assessments will be calculated and, and counted. And that students will, within the next few years, have to be completers of those pathways. So the end result was a, for, for this comprehensive school, it was a sixty-nine D, almost a seventy. And they'd done a lot of work to close those gaps and, but they would have been a fifty-seven F under the new methodology. When we look at the district, you're going to see a very similar trend. We would have been recalculated again, taking some, some big hits with like academic growth and CCMR. So we would, we were eighty-one B under the new methodology. Last year we would have been a sixty-nine D. One thing that I want, do want to point out is that there is now a weighted average of campus ratings. So the way that it worked before is that the district was calculated as its own campus with all the kids pulling in. Now it takes each of the schools and calculates them as a present based on their population. And instead of the calculation being pulled into the main, it actually uses their ratings. And so TEA has shared that these, this is our drafts. The manual was open until June the twentieth while they finalized the final. The, the blue is what was put in the deck. We, we utilized our A through F to compare the differences in which you can see is extremely different than what was true across the state. So that, when they look at these ratings that you see in the blue, this is a statement that reflects the whole state. No differentiation between small districts, large districts, rural, urban, charters. Charters are included in this dataset or public schools. And so they said that, you know, oh, sixty-six percent will stay the same. We found that fifty-five percent here in spring. They said that ratings would decrease in only twenty-eight percent statewide. Ours was forty-three percent decrease and that ratings would increase in six percent of schools statewide. We only saw one campus have an increase. So these are proli, I'm sorry. It was. I'll have to look it up. I can't remember off the top of my head. I think it was Cooper, but I need to verify. Yeah.
I would like to indicate that the commissioner said that the what-if scores were put in place to make it easier for the board members. I would like to request that data by campus for the board.
As soon as the release is done, we'll, like we've always done, we'll give you the, all that information, absolutely. Right now we're just working with preliminary data, which we just received. So as soon as everything comes in, we'll make sure you receive it. And remember, the final ratings will not be available until the end of September, September twenty.
I just want to see, I want to see the what ifs.
So.
Real quick, can you just clear or give a sample, like a scenario when a campus would increase? That there's only six percent likelihood.
Yeah, so that's going back to the way that they're calculated. It could be a number of things. It could be closing the gaps because what you may have is with that minimum size, you may capture more students in there. And then also because you're not calculating closing the gaps on all of the different groups, you're only looking at the lowest two. So that could be a factor where you may be, and it, and it's, it's really, and I will say with our own campus, it was because they were within a couple of point, they were at that one or two points from the switch already. And so it, it did make that adjustment. It, it would not be in domain two that would cause you to make that switch. It would most likely be domain three.
Got it, thank you.
And so this, this was from the, the commissioner. As a school board, there is nothing you need to do right now. Just wait and share the message that it is not a apples to apples comparison this year. Here's the timeline as Dr. Hinojosa shared earlier. We're awaiting a number of things, one of which is our star three through eight performance levels. All that was shared with us was likely passed as what's called a zone of uncertainty and then likely did not pass. So the scaling is happening now. And so the official date for the release is August the eleventh. That, that will be available to districts. We may have something before then, we'll let you, we'll let you know if that does become available. And then August sixteenth is the official release in the family analytical portals. And that will be our primary driver. And you had asked about communications. We'll be, as that comes closer to the release, that's what we'll be sharing with families. We'll be sharing with them how they can go in, access their code to, to get their student information. And then we'll also be sending home information with students. And we'll be explaining to them the, the changes in the accountability. For the accountability ratings, those won't come out till September twenty-sixth is when we will get them. So we'll get them two days before they're released publicly. And then they'll be on the website on the twenty-eighth. Again, we'll have that communication preceding that, helping to explain the, the not apples to apples comparison. And at that time, we'll have those what ifs alongside the new ratings.
Question about the communication. Will there be opportunities for families to ask questions? It's one thing to send a letter and put it on the website, but maybe forums or something of that nature where they can.
Absolutely.
Get clarity.
Yes, absolutely. And that has been part of work we have done before in helping parents to understand. We've done sessions through family and community engagement at the beginning of the year, talking through the different assessments and accountability ratings. And that will continue and will be part of our strategy for the new year.
Will we be doing anything at the open houses and things that are happening right now? That's a good opportunity to share what we're going on.
Yes, yes, absolutely. We're actually going to be sure, again, bringing some of the newest updates to principals tomorrow. And that will be part of the conversation. We're going to be reviewing data with them and explaining what's coming up in this timeline so that they are able to. And then we have some slides formatted, so they'll be able to easily drop them into their decks.
This might be jumping ahead a little bit, and I don't want to steal your thunder, Mr. Trubart. But I don't see this on the six o'clock news. But when the accountability rating hits, that'll be breaking news. That'll be blasted all over the area. And so we have to in some way vaccinate ourselves against that because.
Well, I was trying to wait for the end to.
Okay, I can wait. I just, that's where my mind went, so.
I think we need to tell, we need to tell the whole story.
Yeah.
And we need to tell our story and not their story. We have other ratings where we were rated as an A district. We have success in our kids improving their scores on the SAT and the ACTs, which matter when they go to the next level of education. So we have other areas where we're showing gains and strength in what we're doing with our kids. And I think that's part of what our message needs to be. I don't want to keep teaching to the test and I don't want to make the test the end all be all. I think we need to tell our whole story and not just this story.
Amen, President. There are a number of resources available to families. We'll also be sharing those links regarding the changes. And so they're available on TEA's website. I'll say that currently there's not a lot that are family friendly, although we've been shared that they're, they are going to be providing some. They've done videos in the past and little kind of like one pagers to help explain the system because it is a very complex accountability system as it was. And so those are going to be available. And that, and you know, as a information comes out, we'll continue to share with the board. And that concludes the A through F update.
Are there any more questions? Go ahead, Trustee Adams. I think this stuff is very painful for us and we want to kind of start to focus on what's next, right? How do we make sure? There are so many great things happening that we need to be promoting. And so I think we focus on that along with this. And I think that's how we balance the scale with our reality, right?
I did have a question on that, page thirty, ninety-five.
Ninety-five?
And it says, early September, the district communications toolkit. We're doing something before then, right?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're, we are not waiting until then. There, there's components that we will be sharing out with families, letting them know the changes are coming and that it's not apples to apples comparison. We have some of the graphics and things that will be, we're in the process of translating. So that they're also in multiple languages for our families. A lot of the, the documentation from TEA has been primarily just in English. But we want to make sure that all parents have access to and understand the changes. So yeah, we'll be in advance. And then the big push in September before that release, what we will have the final manual. So we currently don't have the final manual yet. And so we'll be able to also share some of those final pieces before. And as the what ifs come in, the, the impact that that, that has on our campuses.
We will be sending a, a letter to not, well, after this is done, to let the parents know. Just walk them through very simple bullets. It's a one pager, not this extensive, but just to let them know. And then closing out that we are going to keep them updated on the information as it becomes, you know, available. Because right now we don't even have the manual. We don't even know anything yet. But we do want to alert them of this, let them know we'll keep them updated and, you know, recommit to let the parents know regardless. We will, our teachers and our principals will continue to work with our students. So we'll, we, we actually have something prepared now that will go out after our board meeting.
And, and we did similar with the STAR redesign. So before the STAR test, we let parents know the changes that were coming. And then we're going to send that out again as the STAR results will be coming out next week.
I do have one question on, on page ninety-one. At the bottom, there's a little asterisk where it says, this does not apply to dropout recovery schools or if domain one is the one area with the seventy, seventy plus. Would that refer to momentum high school?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's for the alternative education programs that are designed to help students in recoveries. And Momentum is one of those schools.
Thank you, Chief Parasol. Our next item this evening, I'd like to recognize our Chief General Counsel, Jeremy Brink.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hinojosa. We are on page ninety-nine and one hundred for the order and notice of trustee election for positions four and five. It is that time of year, August, where we need to order the upcoming trustee election. This year we have positions four and five that are up for election. This is a very similar notice to what we've used in years past. We have paid special attention to the guidance coming out from Harris County as to how we reference the elections administrator. Because we know that's kind of in flux in Harris County, but we believe we're in a good place there. One area I will call your attention to is on page one oh two and section twelve at the very top, where it refers to the canvassing of the election. And the version in your packet that is currently listed is November eighteenth. It is the eleventh day after the election day. The Secretary of State did just put out their updated elections calendar for November. Because that's a Saturday, the canvassing date will be Monday, the twentieth. So we will update that before the board approves it on Tuesday. The notable thing about Monday, the twentieth is that is the week of Thanksgiving break. Harris County has already advised us that we should not expect to have the election results prior to November twentieth. So just be aware of that. We may need two trustees to come into canvass the election.
Mark your calendars for November twentieth.
For the canvas, we only need a quorum of two. So I just, I really.
I want to encourage a quorum of two.
I understand.
That's the minimum. We don't do the minimum. It's a lot of great data. When we canvass the election, it gives us some insight to our community, where our opportunities lie and where our, where our successes are. So if you are available on the, on the twentieth to canvass the election as a body, I think it would be very productive for as many of us to be here as we can.
Correct? Yes, they can, they can definitely participate. On page one oh three is the, the notice of trustee election. This item is really two things. We have the order where the board orders the election. And then we have the notice, the notice is what gets published in the newspaper and gets posted out in front of the building and those kind of things. So at this point, I'll just ask, are there any questions from the board regarding the order and notice of election? Okay. Okay, may I move to?
To your next item.
My next item. It's the second reading of Board Policy DC Local. This is a policy that has gone through the Governance Committee that the board has discussed at length at the June board meeting. So I will just ask, does the board have any questions regarding the second reading of DC Local?
I have hearing in, thank you.
With that, I will just ask if these items can be included on the consent agenda on Tuesday night.
Not seeing any objections. We will put both items on the consent, consent agenda for Tuesday evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Those are all my items.
Our next item is the appointment of one delegate and one alternate for the 2023 Tasby Delegate Assembly. The item is to allow the board to appoint members as its official voting delegate and an alternate at the Delegate Assembly, which will be in Dallas, Texas on September thirtieth of 2023. So at this time, I'd like to open up for, go ahead, Dr. Jensen.
You ready? Okay, I have spoken with Ms. McDaniel, and she has graciously once again said that she would be our representative. Now, there may be somebody else who would like to be our representative.
I just would wonder, so you didn't make your announcement yet, but I would wonder if you have a conflict. You have to do that, this tonight?
But no, then, then there's an alternate.
I don't think she'll have a conflict.
We have a delegate and an alternate.
Right.
Okay, I think she did a really good job last year.
She'll be fine. And I don't think there's a conflict. And I don't know if she's ready to make her.
Sorry, yes, 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 that's fine. So I'm excited to share. I was accepted to Leadership Tasby, which is a professional development fellowship for school board trustees. There's thirty-six that are selected across the state. We learn all about governance and work with other districts. We travel to different areas of the state, rural, interstate, all different areas, and just learn more to become a more informed board member. So that's my exciting news.
To become.
Out of thirty-six across the state, so we're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And do you feel that that would be a conflict for you?
I don't, I don't either.
No, I was just thinking there might be a timing issue because I know when you're doing that, there might be other places you have to be and you wouldn't be.
And that's why we have an alternate.
Okay. Yes, I would like to, I guess, nominate trustee Correa to be an alternate if you are willing to accept.
I would second that.
Well, thirded and fourthed, and I think we're all in agreement. We have a consensus that trustee Natasha McDaniel will be our delegate and trustee Carmen Correa will be our alternate. Mr. Brinkley, do we need an official vote on that?
Yes, and there is motion language at your seat. I don't think we need it tonight. It can happen on Tuesday if you'd rather do it Tuesday, but there is motion language at your seat if you prefer.
Oh, look at there. He already had us ready. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees appoint trustee McDaniel as its delegate and trustee Correa as its alternate to serve as Spring ISD representatives at the 2023 Tasby Delegate Assembly.
Second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Adams, seconded by trustee Newhouse, that the Board of Trustees appoint trustee Natasha McDaniel as our delegate and trustee Carmen Correa as our alternate to serve and represent the Spring ISD School District in the 2023 Tasby Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion? We did that first, right? And that's a little backwards. All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Did you have something else to say? Oh, could you, yeah, you can vote for yourself. Congratulations. We know you all will represent us well. So our next item is an endorsement of a candidate for the Tasby Board of Directors. So in our packet, we have received several nominees for the Board of Directors for Tasby. And I will now open up the floor to my colleagues for anyone that has any recommendations.
Yeah. I just want to clarify with this being the first time that we've done this. Is there one or multiple?
May I provide clarity? So you would be looking at the positions for region four. Those positions with an asterisk, position D, F, and G, those are large district positions that actually do not participate in the endorsement process. So you, you won't be looking at those. You would potentially be looking at position A and position B. And you can only endorse one candidate for a particular position.
Position B only has Dr. Bro. She's unopposed. Position A was filled by Georgianne Reitmeyer from Klein.
Correct, and she's, she stepped down.
So I, I am in favor of my Leadership Tasby classmate, Doug James.
So am I. But why don't you go ahead and make a motion then?
So which position is that? Position A?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees endorse Doug James for position four B of the Tasby Board of Directors.
I second that. It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse to endorse trustee Doug James from Klein ISD for the position four for the Tasby Board of Directors. Any other discussion?
Just that issue. Four A. Four A, I'm sorry.
Should I say four B? Sorry. Did I need to restate the motion? I'll restate it. I moved that the, the Board of Trustees endorse Douglas James for position four A of the Tasby Board of Directors.
Ready for discussion? Get the motion right, so. They're moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse to endorse trustee Doug James for position four A on the Tasby Board of Directors. Now open the floor for any discussion and recognize Dr. Jensen.
Those of us who know Doug know that he is a fine trustee and will represent us well.
All right, without any further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. All right. And Mr. Brinkley, you'll take care of getting that? All right, so our next item on tonight's agenda, I'd like to recognize again our Chief of Innovation.
It's everything you need. Site traffic is scary.
Thank you, President Grant. This item can be found on page one thirty-four of your packet. And this is a renewal of a memorandum of understanding with the University of Texas in Austin regarding the Advised Texas Program. And we have been awarded a college career advisor to serve at DeCane High School. There was a great partnership last year, huge impact on our kids as, as our own college career counselor and advisor work together to even expand the opportunities for students. And this is a renewal of that item.
Any questions? I do have a question. On page one thirty-eight, it said that the advisor will get a comprehensive high school orientation. So do we need to vote on this tonight so they can go through the professional development other teachers are doing?
They actually will not be starting until later in the month. Right now, they're going through their orientation and training at the University of Texas. And then they, they do get also a kind of a road trip experience at some of the select universities. So that way they have some experience in that realm because they will take our students also on these, these trips. But they will be introduced to the campus faculty. It's a partnership with the principal and the rest of the faculty. And so they'll have that introduction and that time to be onboarded here locally at the end of August.
So when we have someone that starts later than the beginning of the year and misses a lot of that training and onboarding, what is our plan? Do we do it periodically, certain times of the year? Does the campus ownership of that, how does that work?
It does. So they have a site, what's called a site advisor. We have our college career counselor and they actually work in the office right next door. And so it's, it's a partnership. That's really an additional support. So as they're, they're developing strategies together. Also, the Advised Texas has a, has a small budget for them as well. So they're able to fund some of the college career events. And so that, they immediately have, from day one, they have a partner on campus who's working together with them every day. So they're, they're introducing them to staff, letting them know the buildings. And then also their central support. We meet periodically, about every month, with the UT coordinator, the director for the program. And she does come and she meets with our campus principal and, and the site-based group.
Thank you.
How many kids does this counselor touch?
So works with seniors. And so the goal is all, all seniors. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of connection between the two groups. Because there is a separate budget, we also have opportunities to provide experiences for students beyond what, you know, we, we do college career activities, but then there's a whole nother separate budget from Advised Texas that allows and provides additional opportunities, including a travel budget for, so they can take trips to different universities. So it's really all seniors. The goal is, the goal is getting all students those experiences. And so it's just an additional support, similar to TRIO. TRIO also is a partner that we have with Lone Star. And they come in, we work hand in hand together to, to help cut down on the case load or college career counselor has a lot. You know, preparation isn't just on your senior year. It starts long before then. And so these partnerships help allow for more individuals to be successful in college and look at the opportunities, similar to what you spoke about earlier about, you know, are they ready to go on TSI prep? All those components are, are pieces that are supported through the advisor.
So I'm trying to conceptualize what this looks like on the campus. As you said, all seniors. DeCane is four, five hundred seniors.
Yes, sir.
So is this counselor working separately on their own program and touching four to five hundred kids?
So they're working together hand in hand, creating separate events, right? So as you have, we have one college career counselor on each of our high schools. And so that college career counselor has events that they're planning. There's actually a whole schedule that has been shared out. But the, this person says, okay, these are the events that you have. How can I support you in those? But also, what are some additional things you would have loved to do? But because you're only one person, how can I help support you to offer additional things? So such as going into classrooms. They go into classrooms, speak with students, just like our college career counselor does, but it allows for more coverage, right? Instead of it all being one person, we have additional support to help press and provide, you know, those experiences and opportunities to students.
So kind of along those lines, it, the contract says, DeCane, it's listing for, for the purposes of the agreement includes DeCane High School. Are we just paying for one advisor?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, the grant funds, unfortunately, at this time, we just have the one. But we're very excited because it is a limited program, not available at a lot of, a lot of districts and even in the Houston area. We had done it a number of years ago here, and then the, the dollars had gone away. They were able to open up some more. And so bringing it here to us to cover the Houston area. So those advisors work in two-year increments. And so they come in and they work the program for two years and then they go on to do other things. And so a lot of times they may become college career counselors, and they are working as an advisor role, not actually as a counselor role. And so those, we have a new individual that's scheduled to start with us now. And so we've actually had some, some introductions already and had got that started with the anticipation that the board would approve this.
So, so I see that we pay the fee and then UT Austin pays for the salary and the benefits and everything for that advisor. But one of the requirements was talking about administering Advised Texas surveys of high school students. What is that?
So it's, it's tied to like, you know, where are you going? What are your interests? It's, it's data that we utilize through other, like Workforce Commission, that's another partnership. And there's surveys in there too. So really trying to help inform students about what options are available. The surveys give us insight into what students are interested in going so we can help connect them with those universities. And then, of course, they're also using it to identify the effectiveness of the program. Just like with any grant, there, you know, there's expectations that you're making a difference. And so the, the students' progress and opportunities are being tracked.
So my last question is, is exactly that. The data that is going to be shared with this advisor and ultimately with the college, it's, it includes personally identifiable information if I'm, if I'm reading that.
The, there's personal identifiable information for the advisor. We have a data sharing agreement in place, just like we do with other vendors. Any data that is pulled for university research purposes does not contain any identifiable information. And that actually was, when we first engaged in this last year, and that was a, a major point for us in ensuring that that was, that was the case. We were actually the first district out of all of those that they, that they serve to actually ask for a data sharing agreement and put it in place. And so our legal team did a great, great work in working back and forth to overcome that, that obstacle.
And so the last piece on that is also about destroying any of the data. It says data disclosed and all copies of FIP data in any format and possession no longer needed. So basically, T H E C B, that's.
That's the University of Texas.
That's the university. So it says the university should destroy all the data. So how do we make sure that that happens?
And, and that is, that's part of the data sharing agreement. You know, it's very similar that we have with our vendors, our books. You know, those are the expectations set forth, and they can be held legally liable if they violate those terms. We do ensure that when they come here, we issue them a laptop. We issue them access to our systems. All of that is collected before they leave. So they're, they, you know, we, we ensure on our end that none of those data sources are available after the end of the year. And then the university also has that built into the contract that they must dispose of it.
And insurance is making sure that it is in the contract because then they do become liable when it.
Right.
When they violate it.
Well, because we get these, these MOUs all the time, but the language I, until now, I haven't really seen one that is so specific on some of this information. And so that's why I'm asking. Thank you. Very good question.
I think the, the only thing that I kind of want to add to this is in, in line with the way we're looking at budget now, this is a, and I want to sort of get to a point where we automatically do this. But I, I want to see like cost per pupil in terms of programming and ROI data on this. Like what are, like, how much benefit are the students getting from this? And so I'm not sure, Dr. Parisone, you're the, the wonk on this and be able to figure out how to show us those metrics. But like everything we do, especially in our current budget situation, I think we need to know how much it's costing us in real terms, whether that's per program or per pupil. And like, what are the metrics that show us that this is working out?
There's the benefit.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And I know we have been working on those. And that's one of those components that we have also looked at vendors. Not all vendors have the same level of data access. And so that's something we've set as an expectation. We expect to be able to monitor the return on our investment with, with their data set and that we have data dashboards or data access to export. I'll make sure that we put in an upcoming board update, some data from Advised Texas for last year. I'll make sure that we put in upcoming board update, some data from Advised Texas for last year.
Winford, I understand that what you're talking about, getting the best buck for our dollar. But look at this also as very similar to our Emerge program that we have for our students now. And you can see from the history what Emerge has been doing for our students. Sending them to Harvard, to Yale, to the Ivy League, all across the country. Cornell, Stanford, all around. This program, I'm happy to see. And because UT, the intern that's working with them is not representing UT. It just happened to be a student there at UT that they're working. But they are going to be working with our students just as Emerge representative would. And our students will get an opportunity to have more one-on-one with someone that could help them with college applications, with financial aids, with letters to these universities. Yes, our college readiness counselors are doing the best they can and are really working with our students because we've just seen that in some of the applications that our students have put out and some of the graduates. I think that communications just put out the kids going to Harvard in there. But the more that we have that we can offer our students to help them, and one-on-one again, you're going to have here, I think would be the better for our students. So the amount, I think we should be able to somehow sneak in a little $10,000 amount to help our students at Decane, our seniors.
I just wanted to go back to Trustee Correa's question about the personally identifiable student data. Because we're just about to go through a whole bunch of these things. And I was very impressed with how every single contract is very specific about what kind of data they will collect and how they will secure it and handle it. It's just when people are partnering with us and they're doing something for students, they have to collect some information about how the outcomes of those students. So I trust University of Texas and I know Sam is here, Sam Houston, even with videotaping. And we also have Texas A&amp;M. And I can tell you that these folks are very, very serious about how they handle personal data.
And I was glad to hear that our legal team, we were one of the first districts to ask that language be included in the contract. So that's good. That's good to hear. Without any other questions, you can proceed to your next item.
Thank you. The next item can be found on page 143 of your packet. And this is a grant opportunity from the community's foundation of Texas Educate Texas Grant. It is a grant for $30,000 to serve our spring early college academy. And actually, we have Ms. Guidry here in the audience today, if you wouldn't mind standing. So she is doing amazing work. As you know, continues year after year to be one of our highest achieving campuses. All the associate story opportunities our students go on to gain. That is also being recognized by the state. You know, she's very proud of the blueprint and the work as we hit those distinction measures. And she wants to keep moving forward with that. This grant will allow us some focus on Benchmark Four, which is regarding curriculum support, and Benchmark Five, which is regarding academic rigor and readiness. There's going to be flexible learning extension period in the school day for students where students will be able to engage in different opportunities such as SAT prep, TSI, accelerated instruction tutorials, right there at Lone Star College. In addition, through this grant, it'll be an opportunity to showcase the great work that Ms. Guidry leads there at Spring Early Academy with videos that will be taken and resources that will be shared across the state of the exemplary work that she does.
Great job. Are there any questions? You can continue.
All right, the next item is on page 153. We brought forward a number of clinical agreements. Our amazing Dr. Thomas is connecting with more and more universities to address and make sure that we have trained staff ready to support students through our health program. And so this is another agreement with Western Governors University. We already have one student who's ready to come onboard. They work with us for about seven weeks and work in our schools alongside a nurse or her directly as the director and gain those experiences. And the goal is that hopefully they'll see the great things in spring, come back to us, or at least move to the community and be proud of the work that we hear in spring.
Any questions?
So this is a five-year agreement? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And do we, do we have a nurse at every school?
Yes. Yes, we have LVNs and RNs. So LVNs at the elementary and LVN, RNs at the secondary. So those positions, you know, it is very competitive in the medical industry and we are so close to Houston. And so, you know, this provides that opportunity where they also get insight into what we do in education. So we have them at each school and this also helps support. You know, sometimes nurses won't take days too. And this is an opportunity for us to have somewhat some additional support.
Trustee Newhouse, did you have a question? All right, I think we have one more.
One last item, 160, it begins on 160. And this is a renewal of our community youth services or KIIS workers contract. This is a recurring item. We've actually been utilizing the great services from KIIS since 1978. So 45 years of this partnership and the amazing supports that it provides to our families and our students.
Any questions?
Is this number, is this what we typically do, the seven?
Yes. Are you referring to the cost?
Well, just the number, so where, the number of them, I'm wondering.
Yes, it's the same, the seven KIIS workers.
And so they're at high school campuses, middle school campuses?
They serve the district and they are mobile. We have kind of like the groupings, you know, similar to like feeders where we have groupings of the campuses they support. But they move around based on the need. So sometimes those needs come in from counselors, they come in from principals, teachers. And so as the needs for the students, they mobilize to meet those needs.
So that dollar amount is per individual?
Per individual, there's a total on page.
166.
166 of your packet. So 294,4616. In addition, not only are we getting the seven staff members for that price, which is pretty amazing. Additionally, there are a number of services that are provided to families at no cost to the families or to the district. And those even include things like emergency shelter where normally that's like $153 per kid per day, no charges. And so if you look at like page 164 and 165, you can just see some of the savings in addition to the support staff we get that our families are getting free access to so many services.
And we also have our 10 community in schools. At the secondary campuses. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you, President Durant. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Dr. Parisau. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resources, Dr. Terrell King.
Yes, good evening, President Durant, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Hinojosa. Tonight, I bring to you two MOUs for your consideration. The first is a MOU with Texas A&amp;M University regarding student teacher placements in our district from Texas A&amp;M. In a review last year, our superintendent, Dr. Hinojosa, recognized that we did not have any student teacher placement with Texas A&amp;M last year where any of their students in the practicum were doing the, they're student teaching here in spring. And so she established a line of connection, a bridge with Texas A&amp;M to say, hey, Spring ISD is a great place for students to have their practicum experience. And then for us as a district, you know, we're always trying to expand the number of districts we have partnerships with to do student teaching because it's our first line of recruitment. And so if they can, you know, experience our district, experience our students, we as HR will be first reaching out to them to get them to stay when we have open opportunities and let them know the benefits of staying with the Spring ISD family. And so this first MOU, which is on page 190 in your packet, is that agreement so that we can have student teachers and the university will provide clinical supervisors. And we can begin this three-year partnership with A&amp;M to have A&amp;M students from A&amp;M do their student teaching here at Spring ISD.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Hinojosa.
And the second one is on page 198 in your package, another university partnership. This time with Sam Houston State University. This partnership is for our teacher pipeline program, for our alternative certification program headed up by Ms. Tiffany Weston, in which we have received some grant funding from Houston Endowment as well. And so Sam Houston State University is like a university partner in that particular work with those alternative certification interns, providing them with the clinical supervision and also the courses to fulfill the, so they continue and finish their education and become certified teachers. And so, and also because this is part of our teacher pipeline program, there's extensive work done with Spring ISD staff, Ms. Weston, to prepare these teachers and give them coaching and professional development during their internship here. And so the MOU related to that is the second one that I bring to you. And I can answer questions on either one if you have any questions.
I had a question on the collaborative goals on page 199. Because goal two says support in-service educators. I saw quite a bit of videotaping of, you know, ACP candidates and that sort of thing. Are we also going to get some in-service for the in-service teachers?
My understanding is that the program can be expanded and so this language provides for that.
Great, because there's a lot to be said for somebody who survived one or two years in a public school teaching and has shown that they, you know, are committed to it. And I just love to help those folks too.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this question. I noticed on page 202, where we talk about informing the parents about the use of video capture technology. And we said that we'll incorporate it in the parent permission form. But if you've got students, if you got one student in a classroom whose parent doesn't want that to occur, I guess the question kind of goes back to placement. Like, what do we do in situations like that?
I can jump in, Dr. King. I know Dr. Quan is not here, but we do have assistant superintendents. And just because I know that Dr. King did this work in Northeast, but just here in Spring ISD, and that we do have sometimes parents that do not want their children filmed. And so every classroom teacher has the roster of who's turned in their form and who hasn't. And so when, you know, we want to videotape the teacher teaching the lesson or the intern teaching the lesson, those students are still in the classroom but away from the camera. And you'll see, it's, I'm really proud of our teachers because you'll see them on Twitter. And so they may have captured a picture with a child that had that. And so you'll see a little smiley face on there. So our teachers are really diligent about making sure who has permission and who doesn't. And make sure they stay in the classroom, learning, but they're away from the camera.
Thank you, Dr. Hinojosa.
Sorry for the curveball.
Keep them coming my way. And so President Durant, if there are no further questions, I would ask if both of these MOUs be considered on the consent agenda for Tuesday night's meeting. And we will, we continue to expand our MOUs for student teacher placements. We're just to preview, we will be bringing another one next month for another local Houston university for student teacher placement.
Found any objections? We will put both of these on the consent agenda for our Tuesday regular board meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. King. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook.
Good evening and thank you, President Durant, members of the board and Dr. Hinojosa. The first items this evening began on page 208 of your binders, which includes the monthly taxpayer refunds with quite a lengthy list, of course, because we did not have a meeting in July. So we've got about two months worth of refunds that are listed here in several pages.
You know I have a question. I think I ask about this every time. So the adjustment refunds, that's where somebody has gone in and they've contested their taxes and they won. And so we have to pay that, right?
That's correct.
And then the overpayments are, individuals have overpaid, maybe their mortgage company or their loan lender paid and they paid as well.
That's exactly right.
Okay. So for the ones, for all of the refunds, do we, how fast do we pay those back?
As soon as we receive the information from Harris County Appraisal District that says, or excuse me, Harris Central Appraisal District, that says what is due back and what the new value is, then we process those within about two weeks or so. We try to get them on the next check run that we can get them on. So we process them pretty quickly.
Okay, that's good. And the reason that I ask is I was looking at the tax code and it states that we have to pay interest on these refunds depending on the type of, whether it's a litigation or a non-litigation, there's interest that we have to pay on that refund. And then if we don't pay it within 60 days, that interest amount actually can change from, I think it was nine and a half percent to 12% or something like that.
And it behooves us to make sure we get those payments done in a timely fashion.
Trustee Correa, I didn't, I know that all this time that we pay, they have to pay interest on it.
It's fairly new in the tax code. I think maybe, well, not new, but it hasn't been around forever, put it that way.
I feel a little bad about that.
So that, yeah, that was the question was, I would assume that we pay things back pretty timely.
We did, yeah.
And is there anything that we can do? Man, I know we're at the mercy of the tax appraisers and that whole litigation process. I didn't know, I didn't know if there's anything we can do to help mitigate some of that cost. But if we're paying everything quickly, then I guess we're good.
We are. We pay in a timely fashion and our taxpayers know that the judgment has happened. And so they're anticipating that tax refund and they'll let us know that they're waiting on it. If there are no further questions, then I'll move us to our next item, which begins on page 216. And it's our monthly report of cooperative purchases that are over $50,000. Again, this report covers the timeframe from May 16th through July 13th, taking us through that time period since our last board meeting. So again, the list is quite long. Just something that we tend to see in this first board meeting for the new fiscal year is you'll see the asterisk on some of our items that are listed. And those are what we call a blanket purchase order. So those are items that we know we're going to purchase throughout the year. So we'll put that blanket purchase order in based on an estimate at the beginning of the year. And then we'll pay as we're invoiced throughout the year. So you may see more asterisk in this list than you typically do in months going forward.
Any questions on the co-ops?
Yes, I had a couple. I noticed that on page 218, where we talk about installation of playground and the shade equipment. equipment, those funds, this is coming from general funds, but then it also says payment and performance bonds for advanced program. It, it looks like some of the same language that we see from the bond funds. So is there a reason why this was coming out of the general fund?
Are you on the second item on, on page 218? I just want to make sure I'm with you.
Four, five, six, six down.
Facility planning of states. Yes. Okay, and so those funds, they're, they're not bond-related, they're related to the Avance program that we have at some of our campuses. And Avance is actually paying for that. So we're paying upfront and then Avance is reimbursing us. And you're correct, we do have some playground projects that are happening out of bond funds. This is just different.
This is different, okay. And then the one thing that stuck out to me on 217 was the cafeteria table purchase.
Yes, and that's a similar situation where we got the ball rolling with that, but it's actually, they're actually going to be funded by Child Nutrition. They are, and you'll see it when we come in November, and I think I mentioned it earlier when we were doing our third budget review, they're doing some spend down on their fund balance because Child Nutrition can only have a certain amount of fund balance. And so these Child Nutrition tables are helping us with some of that.
Got it.
So a lot of activity will be happening on the campuses next week to get those tables in. Okay, if there are no questions, then I'll take us to our next item. And for the next item, I will have to bring your attention to a gray folder. And we know that folders are, are a no-no, but we took the liberty this time, but because this was a bit of a different type of item, and we took every moment we could to make sure that when we brought it forward to the board that we could explain it well. I could explain it well to you. So you have a gray folder and it says, payment in lieu of taxes agreement for foreign trade zone site. And so a foreign trade zone are secure areas under U.S. Customs and Border Protection supervision that are generally considered outside of the custom border protection territory upon activation. And these organizations, these companies, these businesses are located in or near custom and border protection ports of entry. And they are in the United, they are the United States version of what's known internationally as a free trade zone. So the Port of Houston Authority is a grantee of foreign trade zones. And so this particular company, McLean Global Logistics, is a taxpayer within the boundaries of Spring ISD. And they have approached the Port of Houston seeking a foreign trade zone designation. And that designation allows them to have some relief from federal and state and some local taxes. Particularly, the benefit for them comes in the relief of some import taxes. But the exemption also allows them to have, as I mentioned, that exemption from some federal, state, and local taxes. And of course, taxes from Spring ISD are those local taxes that we're, we're discussing here. So what this does is they're asking us for a non-objection letter, which says that we, Spring ISD, do not object to them becoming a foreign trade zone that allows them to have these tax exemptions. Of course, we do object because we would like to have the tax revenue. So the purpose of this agreement is that in lieu of the taxes that we would receive from McLean Global Logistics, they will still pay us the exact same amount. So though they're receiving some additional benefits from federal, state, and particularly those import taxes, there is no financial harm to Spring ISD. And so if you look at the document that's in that gray folder, the first thing that you see is a letter that we will send to the Port of Houston Authority, which is our non-objection letter upon the board's approval at next week's board meeting, granted that you provide approval. The next item, the next page begins where it says, payment in lieu of taxes agreement, foreign trade zone site. So the first thing I want to bring your attention to is if you turn to the second page of that document, the first, the first bullet point that's at the top of that second page, and it reads, the operator in Spring ISD desire that the designation and activation of the foreign trade zone site causes no financial harm or loss of revenue to Spring ISD. Similar language is throughout this document. And so what happens is, is that the operator will still pay Spring ISD 100% of the amount of taxes that we would have received had they not had this exemption. The currently, this, this organization, this entity brings, yields about $360,000 in tax revenue to Spring ISD. And so we would still receive that payment, we would just receive it in a different manner. So the moral of the story is, is that we would not lose any revenue by this taxpayer having this exemption. And for that reason, we're proposing that the board do approve, does approve this payment in lieu of taxes agreement so that this company can move forward with getting their foreign trade zone exemption, and we will just begin our process of invoicing them annually and receiving our funds. So no financial harm to us, they're able to move forward with requesting their exemption from the Port of Houston Authority.
You going to do the motion first or? We don't have motion language, okay. So, so this means this entity doesn't appear on our tax rolls for budget purposes. Is that correct?
They will be on our tax roll, but they'll be on our tax roll as exempt. So it would show, because if they receive this exemption, they would be listed as exempt. However, we would use that value and we would calculate what their levy would have been and we'll invoice them and we'll still receive that payment.
So this is really just me being curious, and so feel free to answer this. I, I'm still confused about how recapture works.
Oh, okay.
And so I'm wondering if this entity being off of our tax roll would be a benefit to us if we were, say, on the edge of being in recaptured? Does that make sense?
Would it be a benefit to us? We're not close to being recaptured at this time. So their value would still be on our roll, but they're considered exempt. And so we wouldn't, we wouldn't receive the taxes, but their value would still be a part of our role.
That calculation for recapture purposes. So if we were, say we were a million dollars from being a district that needed to send a recapture payment, this sort of exemption would not save us from that?
I can't honestly say that I've studied that because we're, we're not on that cusp. We're not quite there just yet. But I, I can't, I don't want to just say something because I have not studied that.
So what is the benefit to the company by not, because I'm trying to understand, they're paying the same amount.
I have the same question. They're paying the same amount to Spring ISD. Their savings comes in from the custom duty import taxes that they're not having to pay. So as, when we were doing our due diligence in the research, what we were told is the amount that they pay to Spring ISD is nominal compared to the savings that they would receive by receiving those exemptions from those custom duty taxes on imports.
Well, if that's the case, why can't we counter and say we want a higher amount?
Well, because we're only, we're only entitled to, we're truly only entitled to the portion that they would have paid Spring ISD as a, as a taxpayer. I do follow your thinking, but yes.
If they want it bad enough, they may give us what we ask for.
Understood.
Didn't see it. Can they terminate the agreement or is it just us?
They being the taxpayer?
The, yeah, McLean, McLean Global Logistics.
They could choose not to seek the exemption through the Port of Houston. They could, they could.
Okay, so they can.
Right. And if Port of Houston doesn't give them the designation, then this would be null and void anyway, because it's all based upon whether or not they receive that foreign trade zone exemption.
This agreement shall terminate upon the revocation of the site status by the board. We shall not relieve the operator from its obligations to pay damages.
Okay. So if this wasn't, if this designation wasn't granted, then they would stay on our tax roll as they are, and we would receive it through our tax levy. If it is granted, then we invoice them and we receive the funds in a different manner. The agreement would stay in place until something, if something changes. And so, and the Port of Houston has made it very clear to us that if there is a non-payment issue, then we would communicate that with them and they would revoke their designation.
So they're incentivized to pay?
Absolutely. Thank you. The next item is a request for proposals for third-party code review and Texas accessibility standard services. And that item is on page 231 of your books. And so we had two vendors respond and we have deemed both qualified to provide those services, and the administration is recommending that we award to both of the companies that responded. So our next request for proposal begins on page 234, and it is for educational and instructional software subscriptions and related products and services. And we had 64 vendors respond, and we have actually qualified all 64 of those vendors to provide the services as needed to the district. And so that's our recommendation is that we award all of the vendors that are listed on page 235 and 236.
May I go back to the previous item? Because I did have a question on page 232.
Yes, ma'am.
The Safe Built of Texas got a zero on reputation of vendor and of vendors' goods and services. Does that mean they have a bad reputation or are they just a new company or what is it?
It's a great question. I'll pull up my little notes here.
I just, just because of convenience this evening, I actually have my procurement team in the audience, so I can pull up my notes, but I don't know if Mr. Ellison, our Executive Director of Procurement, wants to come up and speak to that one. Probably be a little quicker, just because you're here.
It just so happens, good evening, President Durant, Dr. Hinojosa, members of the board, we just happened to be in consultation about another subject at the moment that question was answered, or asked. So would you mind repeating the question, please?
Sure. So we're on the request for proposals for the third-party code review. And so we had two vendors, and one vendor had a score of 78, the other vendor had a score of 55. And the one that had a score of 55 actually had zero points in the reputation of vendors and vendors' goods or services. So Dr. Jensen's question was, do they have a bad reputation?
And that was based on the references, I believe.
Or are they brand new?
It was, we asked for the references and the references weren't received. And so because we didn't receive any references from the ones that were sent out, requests for references, they didn't get any points for it.
But they were still awarded, I mean, that doesn't disqualify them for not?
It certainly gives them a lower score.
It seems to me to be, it's non-responsive to the RFP. And so, I mean, you're the expert at this, but that would seem to be disqualifying. And they were, they were 11 respondents, right? Oh, no, two respondents.
Yeah, only two respondents. And so we have to be careful when we say non-responsive, because they responded to all the requirements in, in the solicitation. And so being responsive, they responded to the requirements. One of the additional items was references. And so they did not, they failed to have their references provide their documentation. And so they received zero in that category.
So it seems to me, Michelle, that when we've looked at these before, there was a minimum qualifying score. I don't think I've ever seen a 55 be a qualifying score.
Certainly a low score. And, and we needed a secondary vendor just in case we had code checks that needed to be done and the primary vendor wasn't available. And so we had to have some secondary vendor that was available. They scored, as you can see from the rest of the scores, they scored high in the rest of the categories. It was just in that category that they scored that zero relatively high, I should say. And so we had to have them as a secondary for that purpose. But we certainly would be using the primary vendor for, for our code needs. Sure, that would delay any of our construction projects that needed code checks when they're needed prior to awarding. We have awarded before to the primary vendor for our ESER projects, for the SLA, sorry, yes, Spring Leadership Academy and Momentum. We used the primary vendor and we awarded to them. For the bond projects, we're going to have a lot more codes that are going to need to be checked, and that's why we needed to opt for a secondary vendor.
Can we just get the references?
Not after the closing of the solicitation or the formal opening of the bid.
I had to tell you, Michelle, so this one makes me nervous. This is a, a company that's primary locations in Colorado doing code assessment in Texas, and they didn't provide any references, like not even apparently references from where their primary location is. That just, that on its face makes me nervous.
And so I could ask a member of the evaluation committee to come up and speak to the reason that they decided to go forward with that? Yeah? Gary, you're on the evaluation committee. If you'd like to step forward and provide some feedback on that?
And Mr. Ellison, I just want to check, because I have been on RFQs before, oftentimes vendors will submit references and that we have references from the others they've done business with, but this line item is, is one that the actual reference sends to us directly. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so they may have supplied references, but it's not captured in those points.
Right, they, they asked, they, they provided us the references, we sent them the checks to send us back, but they didn't respond.
That might make it a little worse.
Yeah, so for clarification, we sent something to the vendor's reference and they didn't reply. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, that's a red flag. It's not my area of expertise, but that would be a red flag to me.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, let me make sure I'm correct. They provided us with references, we sent those for verification, and they were not verified. That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not completely unheard of that we don't receive responses from references. It's not very common that we receive none.
So in all the RFQs you're going to see tonight, we've had firms that submitted, we asked for seven, we score on the first five that come because references don't always come back in a timely manner. If their reference was out of town, if their reference wasn't available at the time...
If their reference was out of town, if their reference wasn't available at the time, the windows on these are very, very short, and so the reference may just not be available. And so often we end up with three or two references that respond back. It's, it's not always that you have zero. But I will tell you, in the last bond, we had a very prominent architectural firm in the Houston market get zero responses on references. So it isn't unheard of, but it's very uncommon. This is a requirement that the state has installed, having a third-party code reference is part of the new TEA facility standards. So we've not done this except through the ESR projects, which were built under the new TA standards. So I have experience with the primary, but I've not worked with the secondary.
Okay, so I, I think we have a consensus here from the board that they're not comfortable with this secondary.
Do you mind if I jump in? Right, so the reason for the two was for the potential volume of the work that we're going to get, but we do understand your concerns, and we definitely can go back and take another look at it before Tuesday's approval. Absolutely. We, we are very familiar with the vendor that's the primary here, that has the higher score, but we can definitely go back and take another look.
Especially if we know we're going to have a volume that could potentially require a secondary. We want to make sure that that secondary is just as qualified as the...
And there are some other discussions that we can have about how we might be able to approach these needs as we go forward. But this is kind of a little bit different, to Gary's point. This is to be able to handle some of the new requirements from TEA. And so there's a little bit of, you know, understanding that we still have in terms of what the requirements are going to, the volume of the work that the requirements are going to require.
So one of the things that was mentioned was the short timeline. Did we have a short timeline on, on trying to find this vendor, or?
No, I think that would be a Philip question, but I think we have the standard timeline for all of these RFPs, the RFQs.
It was standard.
Okay, yeah, maybe I just misunderstood.
Short timeline has to do with when we need their services.
Okay.
And there may be times when we need lots of services, and the primary may not be available to provide all this. And so we need, we're requesting a secondary.
Okay.
So I, I think...
Hearing the board, we'd definitely go back and take another look.
And I think the board understands the need for a secondary. We're just not comfortable with this one. So if you cannot put this on the consent agenda for Tuesday, and come back with an alternative.
Sure, for the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, and so we were on the educational and instructional software subscription. So if we're okay with, we know we're pulling this one off of the consent agenda. Were there questions on the educational and instructional software subscriptions, RFP?
Are these all vendors that we've used before? Are there any new ones? All pretty standard?
And Dr. Koyar is out, but I can speak on that. So in the past, we've done these as the changing needs that we might have for our students, the new products that come about. We're not saying we're going to utilize all of these. Some of them are vendors that we've utilized for years. Others may be new vendors entering the marketplace. And by having that RFP, it opens up the opportunity that one of them might have a need that we have been unable to fill with the current vendors we're using.
My light reflects in the glass, and sometimes it looks like your lights are on, and they're not. Any questions?
I would just note that as you look at the scoring for all of these vendors, the lowest score is a 73.5. That's just kind of what I'm more accustomed to seeing. So we, we approve, we award vendors that score at least a 70 typically.
And not a 75.
Okay, ready to continue? Okay, so the next item is a request for proposal for box trucks. And so this is related to the funding that's available through ESR2, to our performing and visual arts program. And what we're requesting this evening is actually that the board grant the superintendent or designate the authority to purchase box trucks from the provider that's selected by the administration through the RFP process. And so normally, just like the other RFPs that we've brought forward, we're bringing forward a recommendation. We would, the board would vote on that recommendation, and then we would award the vendor and move forward. Given the timing right now, with the lead time, with getting vehicles outfitted and in place, and with the sunset of the funding source available, we're doing this a little differently and asking that once the RFP is closed and a vendor is awarded, that we give the superintendent the ability to move forward with purchasing those trucks. So we're, we're starting off a little differently so that we can take full advantage of the limited time that we have to get these, these trucks actually in the district. And so the plan is to purchase used trucks, which Mr. Dr. Clark has come up and explained how that process works in the past. But we wouldn't purchase a truck that was older than a 2019 model.
Is that 5 million?
So we're going with used, right?
We're going to have 5 million. I'm sorry? We, so we're, we're gonna, we're deciding to go with used vehicles?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, because of the lead time and because of the short timing that we have.
Okay, on 241, on number 10, the scope of work?
Mm-hmm.
It says purchase newer used.
Mm-hmm.
No, 12, I'm sorry, opportunity statement. It says used trucks are not currently an option on any existing bid or cooperative.
Right, which is why we're going out for an RFP process. If it were on the cooperative, then we would, we would be able to move forward, and you would just get that on the cooperative purchases report.
Got me answered your question?
Okay, good.
That answered all three questions now. We can keep going.
Okay. So the next four requests for qualifications that we have are related to the 2022 bond program for architects, for the approved projects. And so we had, in each one of those categories, we had a two-phase process, which included a cross-collaborative committee that made the final recommendations that are coming forward to the board this evening. So the very first request for qualifications begins on page 245. And this one is related to the Education Performance Instruction Center, which we're referring to as Epic. And the phase two recommendation that's coming forward for award is to go to HKS Architects to work on the Epic project. Okay, if there are no questions, then we'll move to the second one, which is a request for...
Hold on a moment.
I'm sorry?
You have a question, trustee Correa? Yeah, sorry. So we said HKS, that's page 246, is that right?
245 is where it's listed as the recommended vendor? Yes. 247 is the phase two part that has the circle and the score on page 247.
My numbers are off.
So...
Are page numbers not matching?
No, they do.
Oh, okay.
It's just, yeah, 246.
It's phase one.
Okay, that's phase one, okay. The different scores.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, to move to the next one?
You make it.
Okay, thank you. The request for qualifications for architects for the Spring High School project begins on page 249. And the recommended award vendor there that we're, the administration is recommending is Huckabee and Associates with the Associated Company of Smith &amp; Company Architects, working alongside Huckabee. And the phase one results for this project is on page 250. Phase two is on page 251.
Is everybody following this? Okay.
Okay.
Can you hold on a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
You're reading, aren't you? Processing. Okay, okay. You're good?
Okay.
Okay. The next one begins on page... Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Okay. 250 and 251.
Yes, I know that the criteria is a little different, depending on phase one and phase two. But, for example, on 251, portfolio, portfolio of projects, I'm assuming we had different scoring models because we had different categories to score, correct?
Yes, and at that point in time, you're actually seeing the projects. And so you're scoring based on what you're seeing, and whether or not they are aligned to the project that Spring has put forward. So that, that, we're actually seeing it, which is different than what was happening in phase one. Okay, okay.
So those are the presentations, and I know that a couple of board members did have an opportunity to silently participate in the process.
So I participated in, in this one. And so phase one was sort of the, the weeding out of the top competitors. And then those competitors were invited in phase two to present to an evaluation team, which included the principal of Spring High School and several other folks that have expertise or interest in the area. So I just observed. And then in phase two, that's where they, where the part that I participated in.
And there were key people that participated. I mean, they even had the man director and everyone that would be engaged in the process. If you look at it, we received 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There's nine of them, but if you look at the green, only five came in for the second phase. Does that help? All right. Everybody good?
Okay, and we'll go to the next one, which is beginning on page 253. And this one is for architects for projects that are over 15 million. We split those projects over 15 million and under 15 million. So the first one, which is the over 15 million, again, same process, phase one and phase two. And so as you can see, we have listed on page 253, we have a total of six architects that are recommended to be available to work on those projects that are over 15 million.
Trustee Adams, does you have a question?
Nope, I do not have a question.
Turn your lights on.
I'm sorry.
Okay, then the last RFP that is related to the bond program begins on page 259. And this one is for those projects that are below 15 million. And we have a total of four recommended vendors, architects, for those projects.
Any questions?
Okay, then the last item that I have this evening, Madam President, begins on page 264. And it is a request for qualifications for construction-related professional services. And so what you'll see here looks slightly different in this process. But beginning on page 266, you'll see the list of services going down the left-hand side that are included in this request for qualifications. Then we see the vendors listed, and we see the letter S, which says whether or not they're providing a service versus outsourcing the service, providing it themselves versus outsourcing. And then we rank each one of those vendors for the services they provide, either first, second, or third. And the top three ranking firms for each one of the selected services was given priority, and they're listed as the recommended, on the list of recommended vendors to move forward.
I got lost.
I'm sorry? Is this the 15 and below? The one that we're on right now? Yes, ma'am, we're on the construction-related professional services.
It's the next, I was behind. This is, I think we got him.
Okay, thanks.
I'm good. Any questions?
We, we awarded the top three in each category. Yes, so there's actually a total of, let's check out really quickly here. There's several, listed on page 264, yes. Okay, yes, ma'am, that's the last item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westphal. Made it, but we're three minutes over. The Board of Trustees will now recess. This open session reconvened in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.0821. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 8:48 PM. We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees, and the time is now 10:09 PM. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board issue a school district teaching permit to the following employees: Mallory Guillory, Tyrone Lewis, and Ashley M. Richard, for the purpose of teaching non-core career and technology courses, and to authorize the superintendent or designate, notify the Commissioner of Education of the board's action.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Correa that the board issue a school district teaching permit to the following employees: Mallory Guillory, Tyrone Lewis, and Ashley M. Richard, for the purpose of teaching non-core career and technology courses, and to authorize the superintendent or designate to notify the Commissioner of Education on the board's action. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board delegate authority to the superintendent or designate to negotiate, finalize, and execute the letter of intent for the purchase of land as discussed in closed session.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Jensen that the board delegate authority to the superintendent or designate to negotiate, finalize, and execute the letter of intent for the purchase of land as discussed in closed session. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting of the Spring Independent School District Board of Directors, Board of Trustees.
It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee Adams that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at 10:12 PM.